Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Committee, the whole meeting for April ninth, twenty twenty four. It is now nine thirty one on my clock. Uh prior to beginning, I'd like to uh complete our land acknowledgement in respect of where we are here in treaty eight and treaty six. The municipality of Jasper respectfully acknowledges that the municipality of Jasper is on treaty six and eight territories, as well as a Jasper house, matee district. This land is a traditional territory, meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route, and home for the Danse, uh wishinavi, Winok, uh initially uh initial watchy Naya, Naihawa, initial Abi, Sebwebnek, Stony, Dakota, Mountain Matee, and Matee. And ladies and gentlemen, we are going to make some changes to the agenda, I assume, but before we do that, we're going to call the order the meeting, and I'm going to ask for any additions to the agenda. I see no additions to the agenda. I would like to propose a slight change. We have uh item five as delegations and item six as correspondence. I would like to reverse those two, um and we will make item uh five correspondence and welcome our uh municipal library manager at that time, and then move to number six delegations. I would need a motion to approve that. Thank you, uh councillor Hall. All in favor? Thank you. If I may, please.
Usually that comes with a reason?
Absolutely. Um we have a few delegations that are going to be presenting, and the correspondence portion of the uh meeting will be all about three minutes and and instead of having someone wait for potentially, could be half an hour, we're just moving that to a different part of the agenda.
Sounds good. Wasn't just for me, but to the public as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. So um as I said, that we had no additions to the agenda, I would look for an approval of the amended agenda. Thank you, councillor Wilson. All those in favor? Thank you. Now moving on to item four, March twenty six, committee, the whole minutes approved on April second, and item four point one would come up. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Giving councillors a few moments to go through the minutes. If there is no business arising from the minutes, and we can move on. As I mentioned, item five will now be correspondence. And um I would invite uh Angie from the museum to um make the presentation regarding the municipal library board financial reviewer.
Uh thank you, councillor. Accepting our letter, uh in the libraries act, uh every time we change our financial reviewer, we are required to come to council to get approval of that person and their qualifications. Uh this is required uh for our annual financial review, which goes to the province as part of the application for provincial funding. As mentioned in the letter, Andrea Terrell has uh expressed interest in taking on this assignment, and she is a chartered professional accountant. Any questions?
Councillors, do we have any questions for the uh manager, Angie? Councillor Demoto?
I don't, I don't have any questions, and I think uh we read the package, and it's available for others to read online. Uh we have another week if uh if anybody has projections or uh comments they'd like to make or uh make any other recommendations. Uh so if if council is ready, uh if committee is ready, I I'd be happy to move this forward. Okay, um I move that committee recommend council approve Andrea Terrell and her qualifications as per the libraries act to act as financial reviewer for the municipality of Jasper library.
Thank you, councillor Demoto. Any discussion? Councillor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, and I'm very happy about this, and I'm sure uh this Tom is also very happy about this. Tom speaks to um having long-term library staff the last few years and how smooth things are are going upstairs, and I think this is a wonderful addition.
Any other discussion? There being none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? And that is Carrie. Thank you for accommodating the change in the uh agenda. And we're going to take them.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Thank you.
We're going to take a moment now to change seats. We have a delegation that was scheduled um uh item five point one, Jasper Pride, and uh I'd like to welcome Lynn Wana.
Yeah, but Catholic. Good. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Melnick, Tom Twister. Um is my goal to get through this? I'm already trying.
I just found a new trick for me today. It's like I clean my glasses before, and so I actually have some Kleenex with me. That's good.
Just carry with me all the time. Pardon me. All right. Uh I believe everybody, Emma had sent out an invitation. Oh. I believe everybody received an um official invite through email from Emma. Oh, it was sent. Okay, no. Okay, well, we'll make sure that that gets sent out on top of this. Apologize. Um I know Pride has been having some problems with their emails, so I'll double check with them. I'm here as co-chair of Jasper Pride, as well as a queer woman in our community, to officially invite all of you to twenty twenty four Jasper Pride. Running April twelfth to twenty first, we're the only ten-day pride festival in the Canadian Rockies. We'll bring over twenty-five hundred people to our community over the ten days of our festival. They are coming not only to celebrate with us, but also because of what Jasper Pride Festival Society has created for Jasper's community. A safe inclusive space to travel to three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I don't know if any of you fully understand what that means and how important it is to this queer community, not only in Alberta, but nationwide. As you all know, it's becoming less and less safe to be anything other than white cisgender. We are moving backwards from where we were as a human race due to the uninformed, uneducated, and hateful rhetoric being thrown around in our media today. In current political climate in Alberta, where funding streams have been grossly reduced and certain communities are being marginalized and misrepresented, is crucial for Jasper municipal councillors to show support for organizations like Pride. Pride is a nonprofit organization, relies on funding to produce its festival, which serves as a beacon of inclusivity and diversity within our community. By demonstrating your support at our community-driven events such as Family Pride, Pride Storytime, and the other inclusive gatherings, which I'll list following this conversation, councillors can send a powerful message to Jasper residents that they value diversity, inclusivity, and the importance of creating a safe environment for all community members. This not only fosters the sense of belonging among Jasper's marginalized groups, but also showcases the councillors, pardon me, the council's commitment to upholding these values in the face of any challenges or adversity. Participating in these events also provides councillors with an opportunity to engage directly with constituents, understand their concerns, and demonstrate solidarity with communities that may feel vulnerable. Ultimately, by actively supporting Jasper Pride, councillors can contribute to a stronger, more cohesive, and inclusive community in Jasper. Thank you. Almost. Um I do have sort of a list of the few um uh bigger, more community-driven events um that I'll just go over. And then if you guys have any questions, or if there's anything you want more information on the events, um I can try to answer them as best as I can, and also direct you to our website, where you can buy tickets or anything like that. Um so we start kickoff on Friday. Um the opening ceremonies and flag raising is at twelve fifteen to twelve thirty um due to not having the flag poles at the fire hall. We have um received permission from the high school, the junior high high school, so we will do our flag raising there. Um it'd be wonderful to see all of you there. I know um Mayor Ireland got a formal invite, I believe, on February twelfth. Well, um to speak, he usually does. If not him, the deputy mayor says something. Um and then there's uh multiple events that run through between Marmot, and there's a really cool art installation at JPL throughout the entire festival. Um the Family Pride is on the twelfth as well, from six to eight P M. This event is something that if any or all the councillors can come to, it is the most meaningful, unreal event that we put on. It is so amazing. Um and I just, it's to see the community come together like that. It's really, really, really cool. Um uh uh the Pride Awards brunch is on Sunday, April fourteenth, and that's the other really big one that we would love to see councillors support at um. It's yeah, eleven thirty to one at Forest Park Hotel. Um you can get tickets on our uh website, jasperpride.ca. Um and seniors grade bingo. I thought I'd throw that in there because it's a pretty cool event. It's a lot of fun. That's uh April eighteenth, um from two to three, Elfin Summit Seniors Lodge. And then Friday the nineteenth, we've got our teen pride party at the Jasper Inn Suites. And uh importantly, the Pride Storytime here, I believe down here in the porn room, from ten to twelve on Friday, April nineteenth. Um councillor Wendy will be uh reading a book along with a number of other um members of our community. Uh there's another family event, um Saturday the twentieth, from one to three, uh to JPL with Melinda Vergey and my daughter Alice. They'll be reading along with a couple of the people. Of course, Studio Twenty-four, Don here, most beautiful disco, of course. A clothing income drain. But then the other fun one would be uh the Sunday, the twenty-first, sort of our final um organized event is the drink brunch at Papa Gorgas from ten thirty to one. But the family events are the biggest one, would be really, really um impactful to have council members there. Anyway, I have a question.
Thank you. Uh councillors' questions, if you have, or if you want to go ahead, councillor Demoto.
No, thank you very much for the presentation and uh and some of the uh preamble and and follow-up. Um very impressed with uh the Jasper Pride website. It gets evolved into something really cool. I like the fact that you, it's a, it's kind of uh touch and play, like you can select dates and see what's going on there, and I really like the calendar there. It's it's uh really nice.
To add to that, we're actually launching an app this year, and it's going to be maybe today or tomorrow, which is really neat. Um you can, it's uh like in addition to our website, and actually I'm a bit cooler, for lack of a better word. But you can like select an event and add it to your calendar and different things. It's something new that we've added this year that will continue on your round, that you can see our like monthly events, different things, for the fortnight, working nights and stuff. So thank you very much.
Councillor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Just curious if your senior bingo comment was for the senior members of our
You you
Um just wanted to thank you, Miss Wana, uh for coming and all the hard work you do with this event, and all the hard work you do with the queer community. I know uh at the tourism conference I was at in February, it affects tourism when when members of the community don't feel safe going somewhere, they won't go there. And I think what you've done for Jasper and what and how Hardy worked over the years, this is your fifteen, I believe, yeah, um shows. And it is a safe place, and it's not, it's a safe place. So thank you very much.
Very proud of that.
Thank you very much. Um since this was a presentation to council, to delegations, I do not believe we need to uh um do anything formal other than thank you, and we look forward to seeing you at the flag raising ceremony.
Unfortunately, I won't be there. I'm hockey, hockey, hockey. It's a lot to begin a hockey, but um the rest, the other four members will be there and stuff, but unfortunately councillor Wendy and I are at a hockey tournament this weekend, but we'll be back for the rest of pride. But yes, I believe Molly will be speaking, Molly Willam Lynch will be speaking, and I'm not sure. Oh, I'll go over with Emma and make sure the emails that may have been missed get sent out to the appropriate members.
Thank you very much for coming to present to us today and to the public.
Thank you.
And um we are going to change chairs now. Prior to the meeting, we do have um uh individuals in the gallery who are going to make presentations, and at this point in the meeting, I I just, as I've done before at committee of the whole, um the delegations portion of the meeting is to give uh individuals an opportunity or members of the public um to come to present to council and to address anything that is on the topic um on the agenda for that day. And with that, um we would ask anyone in the gallery to present. Uh the other way to present uh is also to formally contact our legislative assistant and to schedule a time to present. But we are absolutely um welcome to have individuals come to present to us. And with that, um I would like to welcome the executive director of the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce to the microphone and um present to us today.
Good morning, and thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick and council. I am simply going to read a letter to you that I unfortunately was not able to get in prior to the deadline for if I all find this. Oh, that was just great. Thank you. Um I'm simply going to read a letter to you uh that we had submitted, but unfortunately did not meet the deadline. And I think it's important that this letter be on the record with the council. I'm appearing today on behalf of the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce and its membership. And I will read the content and then invite you to ask me any questions you may have. The JPCC and the majority of its members recognize the value of transit service and the benefits it can deliver to our community. The current transit model offers cost certainty to residents and relatively low risk during the introductory phases of the service while more comprehensive data is being collected. We realize that a grant for this project is currently available. However, uh and when I say the term you, I'm speaking collectively as the municipality, this letter was originally directed to Mayor Richard Ireland. However, you are now proposing a multi-decade financial and operational commitment with a vague and incomplete business plan. Potential costs associated with the operations and infrastructure of this project could very quickly dwarf the grant money and leave our community with additional ongoing tax burden. On behalf of the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce and its membership, I'm running to inquire further into the status of the above noted. As you know, the chamber and its membership have previously questioned policy, operational expenditures, and long-term planning. We welcome the upcoming transit open house and hope to have following questions and concerns addressed. The rationale for immediately spending a large sum of taxpayer money on unproven e-buses and the facility to house them with limited ridership data, vague financial forecasts, and a lack of ongoing operational budget or forecast, including additional staff renewal requirements for the transit facility and specialized maintenance requirements for both the buses and the facility. The buses will immediately become depreciating assets, and the yearly amounts being processed to set aside for replacement units is inadequate. Based on current projected E V vehicle costs, the current proposal will leave the municipality of Jasper in a major deficit, even if the e-bus is last the maximum potential lifespan of twenty years. Recent and extensive data shows that e-buses have serious performance issues, particularly in cold weather environments. How will potential maintenance and replacement issues be dealt with in a small secluded community like Jasper? The municipality of Jasper has no experience operating a transit service and plans to outsource the daily operation of the service. Is there an expected budget for this? The parameters of the grant are extremely vague and contain no financial data. How exactly will the funds be spent, and what proportion will be levied to the business community? And when will businesses be apprised of the projected financials attached to this project? Council has requested administration present statistics on ridership, excluding student services, proposed additional sources of project funding, and finally, a comprehensive financial document that supports the project. We anticipate the municipality of Jasper will share that information in a timely manner. As always, the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce is a committed partner in delivering services and collaborating on projects to sustain and grow our community and business sector. JPCC has received the facility grant R F P documents and will share them with the membership for consideration. We request a response to these concerns at your earliest convenience, and at your request, we would be happy to send a delegation to meet in person to discuss these concerns for the clarity of all concerned. And then assign Troy Mills, president, and copy to Paul Hardy, vice president, Amanda Gupta, secretary treasurer, and Tyler Kurnick, chairman of membership and communications. One thing that I do want to point out specifically from that letter this morning is that we are very happy to see that there is a draft proposal on policy that will be explored, I believe, today. And I also wanted to congratulate you on putting out the survey and also uh making sure that the open houses are accessible to everyone and that uh that they get to do that they that they should have. Um one thing that we found a little bit contradictory in the attachments that we read was that there was over ridership uh on one page of the document, and on the flip side of the page, it talked about being uh below anticipated revenues by approximately thirty percent. So we're trying to to figure those two numbers out. Our uh our hope is that the next set of statistics that come out will take out the ridership of students. Uh and I understand there is a yellow bus now that is available to the students, and so the information, the graph, for example, that was included in the attachment document would reflect ridership as opposed to the students because that does skew the numbers, knowing now especially that there is a yellow bus that will be operational to get students to and from school. And that is my presentation, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Um I would ask council, uh first, if there are any questions, um any concerns, um I I I think I heard some comments about a ridership grant, which um may be misinterpreted, and I may look to anticipate to administration uh to maybe provide some clarity in today's uh council package um as to the ridership and the clarity of those numbers. But first, I'll I'll go to council and see if councillors have any um questions for uh Ms. Powell.
Councillor.
Councillor Wilson.
Well, just off the top of my head, I'm I'm glad there was an edit to the letter that came to us because the other one was a bit offensive. Um the, there is language in here suggesting that we are spending and that we are going ahead with the with the building, and we are buying electric buses. What we are doing is getting the information for what uh the building will cost. If it's too much, council will not approve it. If we feel that it's not going to be financially valuable, uh viable, we will not be going for it. And there's like this like narrative out there, and it's unfortunate that I think the JPCC is getting behind it, is that we're that we are spending before we know how much it's going to cost, and we aren't. We are going out and we are getting the information, and we are going out to tender. We're going to find out how much of that building costs. We're going to see, you know, uh what I think later on in the in our proposal, or sort of our agenda here, it talks about there's twenty-one interested parties for uh for electric buses. There's a lot of options out there. We're going to get a lot of information by moving forward. We're not moving forward on the project right now. We're we're getting information, and uh I don't see why that's a bad thing, but I I feel like what your letter maybe suggests, or what the 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 um the narrative is out there is that we're moving ahead, spending money that we uh that we don't have, or we're going to spend too much money, but we're not doing that yet. We're uh we're getting the information, and I would suspect that the community would support getting more information.
Well, thank you, councillor Wilson, and I I agree with what you are um getting at there, that there is a feeling out there that this is a done deal. And I can tell you that this letter is written based on feedback that we get from our membership. So you're just having said that helps to clarify things because there is a feeling of going ahead doesn't matter, and we're getting a lot of that at the chamber office. So this part of this letter is a reflection of the membership's um fear probably isn't the best word, but but their understanding of the situation as it currently sits. And so um thank you for saying that because that right there helped to dispel some of that fear or or um not uh not having the opportunity to speak, and that's why we are so happy to be able to to encourage our membership to attend the open houses and ask these questions because the community is, as it is, often will misinterpret. It happens, and that causes fear.
Thank you. I'll recognize councillor Demoto first, and then councillor Hall.
All right. Thank you very much. Um yeah, I just, for me, I'm I'm I've been working really hard in communication, and thank you for your presentation today, and I and I understand it. Uh this was a letter from from the chamber president, and uh you know, addressed to mayor and council, and you're a messenger, so I I'm going to be as diplomatic as possible in my line of questioning and maybe comments, um just out of respect for you. So uh we did uh receive uh some information on um on uh updates from from the chamber, things you need to know. And in that things you need to know, um there is uh there is a a link to a um petition that's going on in the community, and I I think some of the the stuff that we've been kind of combating with getting the right message out there, and we're actually doing some of the stuff that that uh councillor Wilson alluded alluded to, is that I I personally feel as a councillor that there's a little bit of misinformation in there, if not a lot. And uh you know, I I think that some of the 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 things you talked about in in being a committed partner, I'm just wondering if the chamber had reached out to uh administration to see if any of these um items that were mentioned uh were factual, like uh our taxes going up forty percent um a- as an example for one of them, and uh some of the other narratives that are in there, and um I I do have a question for administration.
And I I do have a question for administration after, but I guess like my first question is, did the Chamber reach out to see if any of this was factual before that was kind of presented to a broader communication to the community?
I can't speak to that on behalf of President Wilson, but I will, President Mills rather. Is it on the timer? Okay, so thank you for that, Counselor Demota. I will tell you that I cannot speak on behalf of President Mills. I can tell you that the executive and board have been in contact with the membership. We are receiving calls on a daily basis. And President Mills is doing his best to discuss that with the membership as these concerns come in. I can also tell you that we had quite a unfortunate incident when the incorrect letter, it was a draft that somehow met its way into the system and it was not meant to. I can also tell you that the petition link was carefully worded to say it is clearly at the discretion of businesses and their residents and residents. If they choose to pursue this, here's where you get the information. We were neither promoting nor shutting down the concept of residents being able to sign a petition should they choose to do so. Does that help?
And I should follow up. I just, I understand that. But if if it wasn't a chamber, if it wasn't a chamber-driven petition or message that the Chamber wanted to get out, I'm just curious to why that was presented to the membership to broaden exposure, for an example. Although I believe, actually, if I may, I don't want to create a bigger debate here, but I just have to get some clarification from the administration. Mr. Given, did anybody reach out to administration to clarify any of the the information that was delivered to the community?
Deputy Mayor Melnick for Council Demota, no, we didn't receive any contact from anyone related to the community petition or from the Chamber.
And then I guess while I have you here, prior to this petition coming out, and this is just for clarification because we're not really debating the petition here, but, you know, we are talking about transparency and information out in the community and our spending. It says in that petition that tourism Jasper, the Jasper Chamber of Commerce, as well as individual residents have all requested an operational budget or forecast for the operation of said service. Was that factual prior to this petition coming out? Because I know we have it now from the Chamber, but prior to that.
Deputy Mayor Melnick for Council Demota, so I haven't received any direct contact from either of those sort of three groups. I would acknowledge that both Tourism Jasper and the Chamber of Commerce made presentations during the budget discussion, particularly during the capital portion of budget discussion. So it could be that that that's sort of being suggested that that's where that information was asked for. But certainly, council gave direction to administration to provide additional detail prior to advancing any of the capital items related to transit, and administrations followed through.
Right, thank you. Appreciate that clarity. And I guess maybe I am sounding a little defensive, but, you know, it's just, it's a matter of you know, working with our partners in the community to make sure the right information is out there. And I I don't feel that this was a progressive step in relationship maintenance, never mind relationship building. So it's not a shout out to the Chamber or the President, but I I would hope that in the future that if if things are going to get posted, that at least some some fact finding takes place before we're, you know, talking about the issues in the community being misrepresented, that's all. It's just my opinion. Thank you, Counselor Demota. Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, and I too share sentiments, Counselor Demota and Counselor Wilson around the petition. The only line that I agree with is the first one, which is we find ourselves at a pivotal moment where decisions made today will shape our community for years to come. The province Alberta is looking to increase tourism dollars from ten billion right now to twenty-five billion in six years. So that's an increase of two and a half times tourists coming to our town. We need to be ready with infrastructure, with buses, like. I find it very disappointing that the Chamber would share this petition with their members. We certainly didn't have the highest tax increase last year in Alberta. And as as far as all the like big and incomplete business plan kind of sentiment, that was our our transit strategy and action plan that was was approved last year. And none of this is coming out as shots in the dark. This is all been very researched. Operational costs will save by owning your own buses and owning your own our own bus barn. I remember when you were at, on this panel, you were at budget time, I'm speaking on behalf of the Chamber, and you talked about potentially working with municipality and your members to have maybe some open houses or some what you call them, where you would learn the procurement process. I'm just wondering if you have you done that or if that's happened. This might not be so vague because these are all things that have been talked about in the public for the last year. All on the website, all these questions would be on our on our website. I also wonder why there's still this idea that the student ridership shouldn't count towards numbers when the fiscal board is paying thirty percent of the bill. Like, that to me is legitimate ridership. No, I have no issue with that. Yeah. Recent extensive data showing e-buses have serious performance issues, like what what data? I'm just curious what data you're looking at because there's a lot of other data that's that's showing that they're working. And this is the way that we need to move toward a national park. This is where the government wants to go. We need to reduce emissions. It it all makes sense to me. This isn't the grant's going to cover eighty percent of this bill. It's a very low-risk way to get into owning your own buses and our own our own facility, which was which was approved in our in our plan. This has been the plan for, this has been the plan to contract out the services for three years and own our own buses and facility after that. Yeah, I'm I'm it it's just it's just disappointing to see that link to the petition shared, which is full of misinformation. It's just continuing to sit in this narrative in our community.
Thank you, Counselor Hall. They indicate that the purpose of delegations is to come and present, and I appreciate the presentation of the information. Councils had an opportunity to discuss what was presented. And Ms. Pavlov, I I appreciate you're here as a messenger and you're you're representing your board. And I am appreciative of this coming forward and the letter being presented verbally to us and now is will become part of the public record here. Before I close, I see Counselor Demota, you'd like to make a comment?
Yeah, I think that Ms. Pavlov asked for some clarification on the numbers because we do have some some revenue and ridership numbers that don't seem to correlate from one page to another. And I know that there's some information that was provided a little bit later in the package. It kind of explains the differentiation there. And I was wondering if we could maybe defer to Mr. CAO Given to clarify some of that information, if that's okay with you.
I'm comfortable with that. Mr. Given.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Certainly, I was going to address that when we went to seven point two, but I'm happy to speak to it now. So in the transit update, administration clearly reports and differentiates between student ridership and general ridership. And we did that in our last report as well that we delivered in January that covered the startup of the service from September twenty twenty-three to the end of last year. We made a clear distinction in that report between student ridership and general ridership. So that information continues to be available and presented in the same format that it is here. So you can see in the service statistics portion of the operational update, the appendix one, that student ridership was five thousand four hundred and forty-one and general ridership would be three thousand four hundred and twenty. So that's the that's those two together are combined to make total ridership. As Counselor Hall noted, student ridership is in fact paying ridership because somebody is paying for them. But in terms of being able to understand how many people get on the bus, the municipality has an entered report to council disaggregated that, broken it up so that people could see the difference. In the financial results, if reader reviews seven point two, the request for decision and looks at the financial portion of the report, administration clearly identifies, first off, in full transparency, where there is a difference in revenue compared to the estimate in the transit strategy and action plan. We want to ensure that we're providing that full sort of, if we're going to contrast the positives, then we also have to contrast the negatives. So obviously, ridership is above what was expected. Revenue is below what was expected for that quarter. The reasons for the variance in revenue are explained in the financial section of the report. Administration reports that the variance is due to slightly lower than forecast ticket sales. So we had ticket sales of seven thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars eighty-five cents actual versus a forecast ticket sales of nine thousand dollars. So that nine thousand is a pretty round number. It's our first winter season, and obviously, we're sort of exploring to see how things come together. So in terms of ticket sales, we're about two thousand under, actually less than two thousand under where we expect it to be based in the strategy and action plan. The other variance comes from the fact that partner contributions aren't received in a uniform manner. So the school boards funded at a slightly different time, parks contributions don't come forward in a in a uniform quarter-by-quarter manner. There's a variation with some payments being earlier, some payments being later. And so what you're seeing is a the variation from quarter to quarter rather than the smooth sort of version presented in the strategy and action plan. But overall, again, the final line of that financial section is overall, the transit system is operating in line with the approved twenty twenty-four budget. And at this time, the administration expects it to finish on budget for the year.
Thank you, Mr. Given. I will look to councillors for one last opportunity. Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And while I do understand that you are the messenger and this is on behalf of your board, the very last line of the letter is requesting potentially a meeting, and I'm wondering, we need to maybe direct administration to organize that because I feel that even just now, you learned something new that's been in the information for a long time. Maybe it's time to sit down with the Chamber Board and have a conversation. We've never seen Paul Hardy here. I've seen Troy a few times. Like, maybe it's time that we actually have a conversation with the Chamber Board about transit and the procurement process. I just wonder if we need to make a motion to organize that.
Counselor Demota.
Well, we did have, like, at the Jasper partnership initiative, like, you know, the the conversation did come up a couple of times. And I thought that the air was a little bit more clear there, but obviously, we need to be doing a little bit more work with each other. And I think, you know, just to to try to stay collaborative, positive, and transparent. I think it's a good idea to at least try to, you know, enhance that communication piece within our different agencies, just so that we can work a little more harmoniously together. Because I do feel like there's there's a little bit of friction, and I think we need to clarify that. I mean, we're all living in the same community. And not everyone's going to be on the same page all the time. We're going to have differences, and that's that's what makes us diverse, right? So I think it's just a matter of getting the air a little bit more clear and, you know, and understand expectations of each other. Hopefully, kind of take away some of this, I think, unintended narrative.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm not part of the Jasper Initiative project, so I would not be in those settings, and I would not be listening to conversations. So I would like, you know, tell me with this one, CEO Given, make a motion that committee direct administration to organize a meeting with the Chamber regarding transit.
We have a motion on the floor and a motion for administration to organize a meeting with Jasper, our Chamber of Commerce regarding transit. Counselor Demota.
Well, just, yeah, I think we can start there. I'm not sure if if we should broaden that. And then, you know, how many other groups that we want to meet with collectively? And we do have some information sessions that are coming out. But, you know, obviously, there there is a communication opportunity for improvement here. So I think that, you know, I I'll support this. I'm not sure if anybody else wants to include other groups.
Counselor Wilson.
I'm not in support of this motion. I feel like this is the the avenue to have these conversations. They need to be in public. We are currently meeting with the JPCC and we are currently talking about transit. The JPCC has the opportunity to come to the open houses, and I know that they're coming. This is great. We're going to hear from them in that regard as well. I think that is the avenue for all residents and as well the Chamber of Commerce. And I welcome them there. We and we welcome them here as well. That's where we talk about whatever we want about. Transit could be one of them. Patios could be another. You know, that's that's where the conversation happens.
Thank you. Councillors, I'll weigh in. I appreciate the intent of the motion. We have an open house coming up to welcome businesses, Chamber of Commerce members, non-Chamber of Commerce members, senior citizens, other users to attend our open house to gather additional information. Councillors are available by phone. Our numbers are public on the website. There is a variety of ways, I think, to specifically single out an organization to meet with specifically about transit when we have an upcoming opportunity to meet with the entire public. I would encourage that we should be meeting with everybody and and would prefer to see that as a as an opportunity moving forward. With that said, councillors have had a chance to comment. I'm going to ask for Counselor Hall to close.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to keep my motion on the table. This, to me, is very similar to the very first year of this term, and we met with the Chamber of Utilities. It is in their letter to us. We'd be happy to send a delegation to meet in person. Yeah, yes, we are chatting about it now in public. There are there are open houses coming up, but I I will keep my motion on the floor.
Thank you. With that close, councillors, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor and all those opposed. As we are tied, the motion is defeated. And at this point, I'm going to just thank Executive Director, Ms. Patty Pavlov. I'm also going to give you an opportunity, if you want to make the last comment, on the presentations and discussions today. This is for the opportunity for all of the public. Hopefully, we've had an open discussion. There will be other opportunities, but please feel free.
I'd like to thank you for hearing our our letter this morning. I also would like to follow with what Counselor Hall has said. We have never had an issue before with having specific meetings regarding specific things. For example, the patios. We were a part of that task force right from the start, and we supported ways of working together. And the membership of which is a hundred and forty-three businesses plus another hundred and forty that represent the Jasper Home Accommodation Association, giving us two hundred and eighty-three members that we work with. And I do believe that we we should be able to have an opportunity to meet with some of the councillors, if not all, in a very, it doesn't have to be a formal, it can be an informal meeting. Would be happy to meet at Robson House. It's generally been of an accepted place. And I I will pass on your thoughts and the defeated motion to the President and to our Vice President as well. And then I will turn it over to them to either direct me as administration or to direct them directly to contact Mayor, Council, and CEO Given. Thank you.
Thank you, and if he comes through the motor.
Yeah, good. I, I purposely did want to interject again when the motion was on the table because I had, I turned and I didn't. Want to try to sway the rest of council and I think sometimes in any relationship, if there's a, if there's a gap. It sometimes it takes one party or the other to come to the table and I totally agree with, with what both you and. Counselor Wilson has said. But you know, I think in, in growing and maintaining a positive relationship at least, I think. Sometimes it just, we have to make a little bit more of an effort than what. You know, our current parameters are. Somewhat restricting us to sometimes and I think it's. I think there's an olive branch coming here for communication. I think there's a good way to do that as well. I'm just trying to, you know, keep it as harmonious as possible. That was my position. So, thank you.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and I just want to thank you, Ms. Papal, for coming today, bringing your letter. It does show to me that there might be a bit of a breakdown of communication and I really want to encourage you to encourage your members to come to the open houses. Reach out to any of us at any time with any questions. I'll be cleared up on the website.
I do agree with you, Counselor Hall. The only thing that I will say is that the membership is a collective group to speak on behalf of the membership. In advocacy. Related issues and it is so they come to us as we are the advocacy body. For the membership and representing the Chamber of Commerce's two hundred and eighty three members.
Counselor Wilson.
My apologies and I hate to speak last, but it was something you said. Right at the end, when you talked about the hundred and some fifty, whatever it is, businesses, yeah. Another hundred and fifty PHAs, which means that I am a member of. The JPCC and I have not been canvassed of my support. To this letter or any, many other advocacy. So. Reach out to the whole membership if you, if these letters are going to suggest that. The majority of members are in support.
Certainly I can do that. Thank you, Counselor Wilson.
And with that. I will thank you. Very good discussion, very good, I think, to get this out in the open, out for the public. Encouraging people to come to the public. Opportunities. There's also the online survey and we also have the opportunity for individuals to fill out a paper. Survey as well regarding this particular issue and I thank you for bringing this forward to us.
My pleasure.
And counselors. As we are completing this part of the meeting, I would like to remind the general public. That when we have delegations, this is part of our agenda at the committee of the whole meetings. This is also part of our agenda at the regular council meetings where any. One in the community can come forward to address council. On any topic that's on the agenda. This happened a few times in the last number of weeks and I think it's very healthy in our community. And I would encourage more of that for individuals to come to our council meetings. Similarly, today we had a formal request for a delegation to present. And there is an opportunity to do that as well. And I want to make sure that the public understands that there, if you wish to present. And an item is not on the agenda for that day. You would need to formally. Approach the legislative assistant, Emma Acorn, to be put on the agenda to be able to present to council. Very open to hear from delegations and individuals on anything on the agenda. Of that particular council meeting, but there is a formal process. And as I said, this keeps the communication going in the community. And with that, we're maybe a little early to break. I think we're going to go for a little bit. If. Counsel agrees, I'm going to ask Counselor Wilson. We're going to go to new business, item seven point one, federal housing advocacy.
Thanks for that. Just on the, following up from last week's meeting and fresh on the heels of my attendance at the National Housing Conference. I did want to get some direction for administration. So. I would like to make. I would like to make a motion that committee direct administration to contact the Office of the Federal Housing Minister, Sean Fraser. Sorry, Federal Housing Minister and Infrastructure, Sean Fraser, to coordinate advocacy meeting. You know, focused on housing and land use. The purpose of, so that's my motion, the purpose of this is to discuss Jasper's unique housing and land use challenges. Many of the solutions that were proposed at this conference. Funding, financing opportunities are not open to us due to things like the lack of land use control. Or, you know, the interesting one is like the leases. We just did, I did a bit of research last week on. Another grant that's available or sorry financing that's available, yet the requirement is a fifty year lease. We're only going to get a forty two year lease on the new land for JMHC project. So. You know, something I'm sure could be adjusted. Probably just didn't look at our, our, our unique situation. So I think we've got to get. Our administration to organize. Conversation with the housing minister and that, that conversation most likely happened with the mayor. Mister Given and hopefully myself as Chair of the Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation. So again, my motion would be that committee direct administration to contact the Office of the Federal Housing Minister. And to coordinate an advocacy meeting.
Thank you for that, Counselor Wilson. Counselors, comments, questions? Counselor DeMolino.
Well, I, I'm very motivated by this and, and I think it's good to keep the ball rolling. We've got some really good initiatives. And the Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation met for the very first time last week and I think we've got some really good groundwork. And opportunity to move forward and definitely support this motion.
Thank you. Any other comments? I will support the motion as well as we move forward to try to. Enhance our housing stock here in the community and especially. Housing stock of affordable, affordable housing. And my comments as such. Counselor Hall, if you know. Counselor Wilson, would you like to close?
No, I think I said it all. Thank you.
Counselors, we have a motion on the floor and always in favor. And that is carried. We're now moving on. We're just going to move over time to take, sure.
Yeah.
We're moving on to seven point two. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be taking about a seven minute break. And we'll be moving on to item seven point two at the end of that. It is now ten thirty. Oh, let's call it, we'll come back at ten forty. Welcome back and. Thank you again to our presenters during the. Delegations portion of our meeting, we are now moving on to item seven point two. Transit Service Update and. I'm going to be looking to Mr. Given and do we have a Vidal as well available?
I'll be handling the report, Deputy Mayor Melnick. So in front of you, administration is presenting the Transit Service Update, January to March twenty twenty four. As we discussed when we provided the year end update, that will be. Giving these to council and the community on a regular basis. We see that as being quarterly basis. Council feels differently, certainly can give us different direction, but. Three months at a time probably gives us a reasonable amount of information since we transitioned through different seasons. I think that that's where the most interesting things could be. What things start to look like once we get into the summer tourist season. So I won't go through all of the details of the report. Maybe I'll just hit some of the highlights, the items of note. As mentioned around riders, the total number of riders was just over eighty eight hundred, eight thousand eight hundred and sixty one riders through ninety one service days. This compares pretty favorably to the amount of estimated riders that was developed in the twenty twenty three Strategy and Action Plan. At that time, it estimated that the municipality should see total ridership for the first quarter of twenty twenty four, six thousand riders. So we're up. In terms of the, the number of people actually getting on units. As of February, so a little bit later in the quarter, administration began tracking schedule adherence metric, basically saying. How often are we. Departing, arriving and on the times that our schedule says that we should be. So this is about reliability and dependability of the service for, for riders. Through the February and March period after we started collecting that information, we hovered at around ninety percent. For those two months, eighty nine percent in the February period and ninety two percent in the March period. So we are happy with that. The fleet facility RFP, as council has discussed previously, has been posted. It has attracted some interest in the market with. Twenty one potential bidders expressing interest in the procurement through Alberta Purchasing Connection. So the administration can see who is down on the document or expressed interest. That doesn't mean it will get twenty one bids. It means that there are at least that many parties that have checked out the procurement. That will close on May tenth and then administration will be in a position to come forward to council with the administration with the potential market cost is of constructing that facility. Council is also aware that we have launched live bus tracking location data. So this enables anybody in the community, trans rider, any visitor. To be able to go onto the free Passio Go Transit app so that app is available on both Android and Apple platforms. You just search Passio Go, let's go with an exclamation point at the end. Download the app and you can see Jasper transit routes as well as the live location of the bus. So if you're. Waiting at a transit stop and you want to know exactly where the bus is in relation to you, you can find that out on the Passio Go app. And then finally, in response to discussion with Grand Yellowhead School Division, the municipality worked with our contractor to bring in a. Yellow bus and launch that yellow bus style service for students. Beginning April third and so council will have seen that operating around the community. With that, I'm happy to answer any other questions, but appendix one provides the full detail of the Transit Service Update. I did previously mention during the delegation portion, the financial aspect, we spelled that out in the report and again. The revenue is slightly under that variance. Administration presented, you know, the reasons for that variance. First, slightly lower than expected passenger revenue from. Ticket sales and then also the, that. Variability in how our partner contributions are received. So that is provided there for full transparency. Again, happy to answer any other questions the council might have about the update.
I'll recognize Counselor Wilson.
Sorry, I think I might have just found it. Try to find the question that you don't cover, but I think it is in there. It's a little bit deeper, but my question was. I, in the way, actually I just want to recognize that I made a mistake earlier talking to JPCC. I, I think I suggested that the fleet. RFP was, had twenty one potential bidders, of course, that's the fleet facility RFP. We don't have the. Fleet RFP out yet, but my question was. When do you think we'll be in a position to go out and look for? The fleet, the actual EV buses that, because that is definitely will, will influence our decision, I think, on the. On the fleet facility and, and we had talked about that prior. I, you know, there was going to be a little bit more of the time to get information on the EV fleets. So I just wanted to check in on that.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Melnick, Counselor Wilson. So administration's in the process of developing a statement of requirements for EV buses, really describing. What characteristics administration believes will need for buses for transit service in Jasper. So once we've developed that scope, that scope of requirements, that statement of requirements, that's what we've incorporated into the RP. We would bring that statement of requirements in the RP process to council before launching, just as we did with the fleet facility. I would suspect that we would. Have them quite close together. I'll need to consult with the other members of the team to see sort of when they're preparing that. There is a bit of a chicken and egg question, obviously for council and community about, well, you know, how much are EV buses going to cost versus how much is the. Facility going to cost? And if we don't have a facility, then why would we bother you? So we'll be working through some of that. But I would expect that administration would be bringing the two quite close together so early.
Thank you. And if I may further. Yes, why would we have a facility if we didn't have EV buses? Well, we would maybe need, most likely need a facility for. You know, regular buses if we were going to go that route, if the EV was just going to be too expensive for us and. Besides some electrical infrastructure, I would. You know, suggest that that facility may be very similar. To. An EV facility rather than a regular facility. And so we might see some cost savings if we don't go electric, if that was like just too onerous. Although, so just put that out there, we're building a facility, that facility would still serve the purpose for any type of. Public offered, municipally offered transit in the future. Just one second. Yes, okay, I see. Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Deputy Mayor Melnick, certainly Counselor Wilson is correct. So the facility. As council saw in the presentation from administration, the facility is really general purpose. The, the only additional considerations for the electric side of things. Is that it would have the conduit to allow for the installation of chargers in the building. As administration reported previously, the procurement of chargers would likely happen. Along with the procurement of the buses rather than the building, you know, so. Because the building itself is a very typical industrial style, pre-engineered structure, which is probably one of the most simple structures to build. So not, didn't be anything fancy per se or specialized due to EV. And so it's. Administration expects that it will be able to provide in, in term until. Until such times the municipality had demand to fill it up with all buses, there would be excess capacity where we could use either. Our existing light duty electric vehicle fleet parking side or other pieces of fleet equipment. And if council chose not to go ahead with the EV buses, that would significantly. That, that would be the core purpose of our federal grant application would be gone. And so funding for the fleet facility would change substantially because at this stage, the federal government has been paid for eighty percent of the cost of the facility. If we chose not to go forward with the EV buses, we wouldn't really have to rethink how we finance that building because. Right now, the feds are paying eighty percent of the cost. So if we chose not to go with EV buses, they wouldn't be paying that much and the municipality would have to shoulder a hundred percent of that cost likely.
Understood. And, and final, I just to carry on with this conversation is that. In the RFP for the facility. Was there a projected start date of construction?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, for Counselor Wilson, yes, there was. It would have been a fall twenty twenty five start date. For design permitting and potentially foundations with sort of finalizing construction through twenty twenty five.
Thank you. Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, and thank you for this report. I'm happy to see that you're chugging along. I have two questions. Regarding the Maline Canyon route, I'm just wondering where. Municipality is kind of at with that one. And then my other question is around the yellow bus. Does that change things logistically with? Now that bus isn't only going to be able to be used for students or can we still? Move it into rotation? If we need to?
Deputy Mayor Melnick. Deputy Mayor Melnick, for Counselor Hall. So first on the Parks Canada request, we've been able to provide them at the administrative level, some. High level estimate of the sort of hourly operating costs. But we have held off on providing any further information because there is really a policy discussion. That you'll see in the Transit Service Standards Policy, which is the next item on the agenda about what are council's expectations for how much an external. for how much an external, uh, agency or partner needs to pay for any extension of service outside of town site. So we've been able to say the cost to provide service is about this much per hour, on the hour, you know, and they could do their calculations there. Um, so the municipality hasn't made any commitments, um, but we've had those administrative conversations uh, awaiting sort of further council direction via policy. Um, with respect to the yellow bus service, um, so the unit would be available for general service, there's no prohibition using that type of unit. I think it really comes down again to a standard of service that the municipality might wish to provide. And whether, uh, we would want to have that as, you know, providing public transportation to visitors in the yellow school bus, you know, for peak period. I see some reaction from council members.
You want to get picked up at the campground in the yellow school bus, I don't know.
Well, and so, so it, it, I, I think that that's probably administration's, uh, general view of the issue is that we likely would not use that for a general purpose service, uh, we do still have the, uh, the white, uh, forty passenger bus is still in the community. So we now have essentially a complement of four units in Jasper available for use. Um, the yellow bus really dedicated student service, uh, the two black buses, uh, for general service as well as now the white bus. So we see that white forty unit bus as an opportunity to provide excess capacity. So in the summer, we find that there are times of day, uh, days of week or routes that we're regularly seeing over capacity or, you know, significant, significant demand on, that we've had that ability to swap in that bus, although it might not be what our desired sort of declining and customer service standard would look like, um, but we have a lot of flexibility.
Counsel Hall.
Thank you, and one more, uh, question just came to me, I'm curious when, uh, the actual buses, like the, I know these are sort of temporary, well, uh, clearly gets the actual buses, if those are coming.
Yeah. As council will remember, Deputy Mayor Meline for Counsel Hall, um, so, uh, the contractor has had new buses for us on order to replace the two black buses, and the main feature is wheelchair accessibility. So right now, uh, as the destination, we can't offer, uh, accessibility for people with mobility issues or wheelchairs, um, the two new buses will offer that. Um, obviously, that's a big priority for us as we get into the peak tourist season or visitor season. Um, the timelines on those are, are looking like they're are, uh, late May, June. Um, we certainly want to see them here for the early tourist season, but we are at the um, at the mercy of, uh, the manufacturer service.
Counsel DeMoto.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all this information. And, uh, you know, uh, Counsel Wilson, it made some reference to some of the, the future, uh, perusing, uh, potential EV. Um, and even just the housing, and, and I'm kind of warming up a little bit more to the housing part uh, or just having, uh, you know, a mini depot area for, for, uh, storage. And, uh, you know, I, I, there's a few tangents that I wanted to, to go off on and make comments on, but, you know, um, over the weekend, I was thinking about the sewage treatment plant, because I remember a long time ago, that was a big expenditure for the community and, you know, what we had to take out for that. And there, there was a lot of controversy. And I'm glad that the council of the day made that decision, because we had to oversize that for future, uh, you know, use and, and the pressure that the community was going to face. And I thought that was some pretty good, uh, foresight, and, uh, that thing's been oversized, and I think it's still slightly oversized uh, a little bit for, you know, uh, for the future, so we've been pretty lucky that way. Um, you know, because we've had that, that opportunity, so I, I, I look at this and, you know, not to really make a direct reference to the sewage treatment, but, I mean, some of the foresight that I think is needed here uh, is to like future purpose, you know, a facility and, and, um, this is part of the tangent, I don't want to go too far off. I was talking to an IT expert, uh, this morning to, to go over a few things, uh, at home on, on my work computer and uh, we were talking about searching and how, um, there's a lot of information on, uh, people's home-based computers, uh, uh, with, you know, search, searching within your bubble and your preferences. And when I was looking for information on EV charging and EV buses and uh, there's been a lot of controversy on winter storage and things like that. Um, even down the road, if we decide to choose hybrid or we go with a mix of electric, um, you know, fossil-based fuels in vehicles, um, one of the biggest advantages, uh, that, um, EV units, um, have, when you have proper storage, is that in cold weather, from what I've read, and this is within my own search bubbles, that, uh, if you can preheat them and, and keep the batteries warm and the cabins warm in advance before they go out, uh, gets a lot more range out of them, and, you know, I was, and the more you research, the more you'll find out on that. But anybody can, uh, become an expert on any part of just about anything you want to search, so if you want to search about the negative aspects of it, there's so much information out there. So I was trying to keep positive, uh, but it's also good to get a balance and, and understand what potentially might be out there. And I'm going to lean on, on people that know more about this that do this every day than I do. So I do look forward to more information coming to us. Um, you know, I'm, I'm still not sold that EV is, you know, outright the way to go, but like Counsel Wilson, um, we're getting information, and I think regardless of anything, if we've got somebody to at least build a facility that might, uh, be roughed in to do something bigger than um, something simple right now, I think if the free money is there to at least take advantage of future purposing something for our community, because we don't have urban transit, it's when I was a kid here, they used to have the Happy Bus. They used to go from, uh, up to Jasper Mark Lodge and back, I think, you know, and, and I came to town and that, that was kind of like the start of of Durant and Jasper, and we've had that gap for a long time. And now people that are using it are benefiting from it, and I think there's an opportunity to make it grow. It needs to be, I think, advertised a little bit more positively, uh, from what's going out in, in social media and petitions and stuff like that. I think, um, there, there are a lot of work, ways to work with the community on embracing this a little bit more, and I think a big step is to, to have these communication pieces and open houses that are coming up. So that's my ten bits, I hope, uh, everybody stayed with me on that one, I appreciate your time, thanks.
Counsel, is any other comments? If there are none, um, counselors have, have expressed uh, more than I could say, so I am, uh, going to ask if we could have a motion um, to receive the Transit Service Update for information. Counsel Hall? Any other discussion? Call the question, all in favor, and that is carried. Moving on to item number three, oh, and Counsel DeMoto.
Before we move on, just because, like, uh, we were specifically talking transit, um, just curious. Uh, I don't want this to sound too infomercial-like, but through you, uh, Deputy Mayor Meline, uh, to Mr. Given, I just wanted to know how our current EV, uh, uh, vehicles fleet, uh, are operating in, in, since we've bought it, bought them.
Thanks, uh, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Meline for Counsel DeMoto. So, yeah, um, council probably remembers and the community may not be quite as aware, the municipality actually does have two EV vehicles already in our fleet, so we bought two Ford E Transit vans. Uh, we've been running them over the course of last fall and winter, and anecdotally, anecdotally, um, we've found that they were the best cold startup vehicles, uh, because there's no, you sort of liquid inside that you have to, that, that can freeze up, that you have to crank over and get it started. So in the extreme temperatures this winter, we found that they performed very well in terms of startup. Um, we have them for fairly light use around the community, and so while the range did go down, it was never less than we could, uh, less than we needed in working. Very different application than, uh, than buses or transit vehicles would be, um, but they also aren't benefiting from that interior storage as we proposed for the, the transit. So we have some early indication that, that the electric vehicles are working well for us, a slightly different use case. Um, but performing quite well in cold weather, um, even without the benefit of that interior storage, so it's not necessarily a requirement. Um, they, they seem to be performing quite well, uh, obviously, there are things that we would want to consider, and we'll have a lot of discussion about that when administration brings forward the statement of requirements for the EV buses. Uh, we can have a good discussion about, uh, what the industry is finding about reduced range and how, uh, the municipality's approach would mitigate those concerns.
Go ahead, Counsel DeMoto. Thank you, and you know, and that's good, that's good info to hear, because I, I think that, you know, uh, administration's doing their research and understanding, and we're getting some hands-on experience from, you know, smaller vehicles and understanding range and cold weather and things like that. And, you know, when I was looking at all the information here and some of the policy that we're going to have discussion on, is that I, I think primarily, when we're discussing transit in our community, we're looking at a community-based model first, at least to me, and, uh, I'm not sure if any other counselors are interested, but I think that, you know, if, if other entities are coming to us and they want us to be helping service other areas um, outside of that, like, it's going to take a little bit more to get that range, it's going to take a little bit more to facilitate those areas, and we're not going to make that all up out of ridership. So when we're having these broader discussions on servicing, um, you know, other agencies and partners, uh, in the community, I'm going to be asking, well, what's it worth it to them? And because I think we're going to need some investment on that infrastructure, not only for contributing to advertising or, um, you know, uh, operations, but I think when it comes down to that investment, we're going to need to, to talk to our partners in the industry and say, what's it worth it to you for us to, to be going to stop at your properties? Thank you.
Counsel Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, just for clarification, did we buy those or were they grant-funded?
Uh, in both cases, so they were, sorry, Deputy Deputy Mayor Meline for Counsel Hall. In both cases, there are vehicles that municipality had, uh, planned to swap out, so there is budgeted replacements and twenty twenty-three approved budget. Administration was able to source, uh, grants through the, uh, provincial municipal planning Jackson Center, uh, which made the cost of the EV basically comparable with the cost of an internal combustion. So they were ones that we're going to be buying anyways. Um, there was a grant that enabled the cost to be equivalent with buying internal combustion, uh, sort of brought it down to the same level, and so we made the choice to buy the EV vehicles rather than internal combustion.
Thank you for that.
Counsel Wilson. Sorry, I don't know where this fits in, it does fit into the last conversation, but, and, you know, sandwiched in between the two. Uh, but I didn't have a chance to, to do a quick search when I, uh, when we were on the topic, if you may, would you, yeah, uh. So when I travel, uh, I use Google Maps, and, uh, so I'm like, okay, where do I need to go, and I put it in, and then I go directions, and then I have options of car driving, uh, walking, uh, boat, bus, and, and so, go, public transit, great, then you can click on to that, and then it'll tell you even where to go and what bus to catch. So I, I haven't looked at Passio Go till much yet, uh, although I just go, went on to Google Maps and it doesn't give me the option to do the bus yet. Uh, is there an opportunity, because I think that's a pretty overarching style of, of, uh, access to public transit in areas that tourists are coming to. So, you know, maybe we don't get it in there before this year, but maybe that's something to, uh, to investigate.
Deputy Mayor Meline for Counsel Wilson. Yeah, absolutely, it is, uh, this is on administration's mind. Um, so the first step was getting that, um, publication of the general transit specification, so I know that in the major projects. Uh, so that wasn't up until early this year. Um, that was essentially the GPS location hardware that's now installed in the fleet that's operating in Jasper, that's step one. So capturing the, where the bus is and timing, that enables the Passio Go live location information. The next step is publishing that data, uh, in that format, which we have available. The final part of the equation is that how do you get in touch with Google and Apple to make sure that it's uploaded into their maps application? And that's something that is under way with administration, but it's sort of a, a lower priority, uh, we certainly understand that for visitors, um, probably like lots of council members, when you're in a new community, you probably search how to get around. Uh, we would like Jasper Transit to be able to show up in that application that people are most likely using, either Apple or Google Maps. Um, we just have to figure out how that sort of works through and work into their systems for getting our data feed, which is in the right format, um, and how we can ensure that it's being published in a way that they can access it. Right on, thank you.
Counsel DeMoto.
Well, I want to maybe use Counsel Wilson as a travel agent or advisor, because I want to go to places where the boat shows up before the bus. Maybe, because I haven't seen that one yet, so I think that's pretty cool.
And on that note. And on that note, I will add that on the Alberta municipality's website, I read a good article about um, EV vehicles at minus twenty-three going from Edmonton to Red Deer and back and um, charging times and so on, not maybe directly related to buses, but certainly that, um, there was a change in, uh, in performance when a bus or when the vehicle was warm starting out as opposed to starting out cold, but one thing that Mr. Given brought up, they do start, and cold weather consistently. So I'm going to take us from no man's land here and get us back on to the agenda at seven point three. Transit Service Standards Policy, and, uh, Mr. Given.
Thanks. Thanks very, thanks very much Deputy Mayor Meline. Uh, so under this item, administration's recommending that committee recommend council approve the Transit Service Standards Policy as presented. Uh, obviously, if there are any significant changes that committee would like to see prior to adopting the policy or prior to recommending that council adopt the policy, um, and alternatives that committee could direct those changes or could direct administration to, uh, to take away the policy, make changes, return to committee. So, uh, as council will remember, in January of this year, uh, committee directed administration to develop a policy, a Transit Service Standards Policy, and return to a future committee meeting, so that's why we're here today. Uh, the draft policy, um, outlines the principles and practices that will guide the development of Jasper Transit as well as the management of the service on an ongoing basis. It covers, uh, four functional areas or four broad categories of standards that the municipality might wish to adopt. Uh, those are service warrants, uh, which would be criteria is used to assess the need for new services or service level adjustments. Uh, policy would also mandate a two-year external funding commitment, so again, we can discuss that in a little bit more detail. The next category or next area is service quality and performance, which would establish the standards for service delivery to, that ensure safety, reliability and comfort for passengers. Uh, we talked about some of the specifics that are recommended to be identified in that. The third category is service productivity, uh, which is really about measuring the performance of the service on a number of different factors, uh, both on individual, uh, routes to see how a route or a time of day is performing. Council appreciate the importance of this, as, uh, we made our winter service adjustments over the, you know, from budget time to the start of the new year, where we tweaked the winter service schedule, uh, we certainly did that in response to feedback from, from users. Um, the intent of policy would be to provide a more robust way of analyzing routes, times of day to say, okay, so where might we want to make changes? Um, as well as to look at, uh, route and service revenue and subsidy levels as, uh, key factors that council will want to be apprised of on a regular basis. Uh, and then finally, around, uh, transparency and committing to clear and open communication with stakeholders. Uh, the policy provides, uh, some direct requirements for quarterly and annual reporting, uh, regular ridership surveys and, uh, maintaining, uh, customer feedback system as well as, uh, an ongoing live vehicle location information. Uh, again, those are things that were specifically referenced, um, through the end of last year, start of this year, when we had our service interruption, it was identified at council table, that timely, uh, communication with transit riders, including providing them a way of knowing immediately where the bus is would be important going forward, so those have been integrated into the proposed policy. So within the policy, it's acknowledged that detailed and ongoing measurement and assessment is the responsibility of administration. And, but council has, uh, significant role to play in defining and communicating what the community's overarching priorities are for the service. So the policy is really structured that way, with council determining to what should be measured. Um, and policy acknowledging that administration would determine the how to measure those things. Um, finally, over time, administration fully expects that as, uh, council, the community, uh, get more experience with the service, and as we go through, uh, uh, get more experience with the service and as we go through, uh, different issues or circumstances over time, there would be adjustments for additions to the policy uh, with additional standards being defined by council. So we certainly see this as a living document. Uh, we don't see this as something that council would adopt. Now, you know, in in early twenty twenty four and then not touch it again until sometime in twenty twenty eight or twenty twenty nine. It more likely is something that council adopt now to start to provide that, uh, playing field or a frame of reference for administration as we deliver the service and as new, um, as new considerations arise, uh, the council would likely, you know, incorporate those considerations into future policy adjustments. So the policy is there, uh, in front of council. Uh, that's the introduction of the report. Maybe I I would be happy to discuss in a bit more detail the four different categories of of standards um, that administration is recommending, but you will see that they follow a similar format with providing at a high level, the areas that the municipality will assess. Um, and then a area where council specifically establishes some standards that they would like to see. So giving council a really direct opportunity to say, okay, this is what our expected standard is. Um, and then in other areas where maybe we don't yet know exactly what we should be setting as a standard, uh, identifying for administration what council would like us to consider. Um, and knowing that the policy does set up those reporting requirements so that council adopts the policy, they'll start to capture the data in alignment with the policy and present it to you on quarterly and, uh, annual basis. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Appreciate there may be some discussion about this. Um, and it's a pleasure to recommend this to you.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Um, recognizing this will be a work in progress. I appreciate that, that, um, once adopted, this could continue to be updated and changed as we learn more during our, um, our adventure into the transit service. Councillors, um, any commentary, questions regarding the service standards policy?
Counselor Demoto. Well, this is kind of where, uh, you know, um, I'm remiss to not have the mayor here because he's he's one of those, uh, crafty people on council that are good at word smending and it's, uh, I really appreciate the work that's, uh, that's been done here by, uh, Vidal, um, and and administrative support uh, behind this because I I think it's for me to understand it. It's well worded. Um, I like the, uh, the concept of and the layout of the standards. Um, you know, and and as much as words matter, I think formatting words matter and much like I was a bit of a stickler in our strategic plan and having everything kind of follow in order in the in the discussion part where we have the the service warrants and then the the service quality and performance. I understand that we should know, uh, what we need to do before we start discussing quality and and things like that. Um, and so I appreciate the the layers and and now everything's laid out. So within the policy itself, um, in the the policy wording, uh, page. Trying to find the page now. Uh, it would be one of three in the document. Um, but thirteen is sixty nine, um, in the in the whole package. Uh, where policy is, I think, just a little bit of the wording that comes in, I I think safety is is probably paramount. And I would like to see that come before efficient because I think we should be safe first and then efficient, convenient and reliable as as those things, uh, would unfold, uh, particularly that's how it comes out when we go down and and the basic um, wording of the standards under quality and performance, it does ensure safe and reliable, comfortable service. So just to be a little bit working group with each other, it doesn't really make a difference, but I think when you're addressing policy, it's important to know that I think our biggest concern is is safety and accessibility and maybe that could be another term that's used in there, maybe safe and accessible. Because we are making the effort to outfit our current fleet with, uh, wheelchair accessibility and I I think that's important to note as well. So, um, could be something to consider.
Thank you for that, um. Commentary, Mr. Given, incorporating safety and accessibility into the document, uh, where appropriate?
No, uh, Deputy Mayor, like, uh, absolutely. Uh, this is why we bring it to council if there, you know, council wants to reorder the priorities or to identify priorities that may be missing. This is, this is why we bring it through committee to receive exact this kind of feedback. So um, happy to sort of in that policy statement upfront to ensure that safety, uh, and accessibility are are primary considerations and they're demonstrated that way by being first in the order. Um, absolutely happy to do that and happy receiving the other feedback, councillor.
Thank you for that. And other councillors? Counselor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, I think it's really encouraging that we've already taken public feedback and made this a schedule adjustment after only five months. We're not going to get it right the first time and I think that's a pretty big sign of success that we're willing to adapt. So I commend administration on that one. Um, this will come back to council next week. Anyways, so the mayor can absolutely win all his words. And yeah, great job.
Counselor Wilson.
Just because it's in the first, uh, few lines, um, I was able to catch it. And before the mayor, uh, gets this one, it's a double word. Uh, this policy is intended to provide provide. Yeah, but don't you love love the concept of this policy? You know, so we're providing, you're going there to. Good catch.
So we have some words for the thing there, I see, and, uh, um, any other suggested changes, uh, Counselor Demoto?
Uh, not a suggested change, but just to to clarify that I am, uh, pleased and and happy with the, uh, with the layering of the standards with warrants first because we do have to know what we're doing and I was making more reference to the, uh, the order and the quality of the fund. So I think that's just to be clear on that one. I wasn't sure if I was.
Mr. Given.
Thanks Deputy Mayor Meline. Maybe if if I could just briefly appreciate to first off, appreciate the the feedback. Maybe I would just take a moment to um, speak to some of the specific sort of measures that are identified because these really are, uh, if I can use the analogy of dials, uh, dials that council could choose to turn up or turn down. Um, and there, you know, there's some specifics that may be worth discussing or highlighting here. Council can consider it, uh, committee can consider for this goes to council or maybe you may wish to directly change at this time. So under service warrants, um, under the specific council established, uh, points or considerations would be that prior to establishing new routes outside the town site, the municipality shall require a two year external funding commitment equal to ninety percent of the forecasted operating cost of the route. So there's a couple of things there that count that the council administration, um, uh, brought forward, council can choose to judge if you wish. Um, first, you'll see that it's specific to establishing new routes outside the town site. Um, I think that the understanding here or the implicit, uh, suggestion is that the municipality is responsible for determining the service to residents within the town site and 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 this isn't intended to apply to necessarily a recommendation of the municipal, you know, administration may come forward at some point in the future and say, we need a new route or type of service within the town site to meet town site needs. That's one type of discussion. A discussion from an external party for service outside the town site is, I think, pretty different. Um, so so that's council should be aware of that. Uh, the second is this idea of a two year external commitment. Uh, that is actually a term that's reflected or a suggestion that's reflected in the twenty twenty three strategy and action plan. That there should be enough commitment from any external funders to allow a route to mature so that the municipality and the external parties can decide whether it's ongoing basis. So, um, uh, so that point, I think we should just highlight, um, and then finally that the external funding commitment should be equal to ninety percent of the forecasted operating cost. So there's, there's a couple of two, there are at least two different parts to that that we should discuss. First, that it's ninety percent of the forecasted operating cost, not one hundred percent. Council may say what should be one hundred percent or we're in a more of a partnership mode. Um, again, that's, that would be up to council, but I just want to highlight that, that administration is saying, you know, there is a general benefit to residents, visitors and the community of public transit service. Um, and that general benefit would be recognized by the municipality being willing to provide, um, support of about ten percent of the operating cost of it. Council might say, well, the first two years, it should be one hundred percent and then the municipality could decide later on, like just again, want to specify that administration making some recommendation there. Council would be free to ju- adjust. The other thing that I would note is what is not specified here is about the capital cost. Uh, so adding new routes, um, you know, in certain in many circumstances, adding a new route would likely suggest that we may need new fleet or additional fleet. Um, it is not specified here. That doesn't mean that administration is not thinking about that or it does not mean that administration believes that the municipality should, uh, shoulder a hundred percent of the cost of any additional fleet. It, you know, my interpretation of the way that, you know, about its absence here would be that's an item for negotiation between the municipality and the external party. It might benefit from specifying that, but certainly my approach, uh, to any of those discussions would be to ask for some kind of capital contribution towards any required fleet to drive the service. Um, but I just wanted to highlight that, you know, those are some considerations. Uh, obviously, this is particularly relevant with the Parks Canada request for Moline Canyon service. So if you start to apply these measures to that request, if, uh, Parks was willing to commit to two years of the expected operational cost of that service, uh, or ninety percent of that operational cost, that service is that a essentially is that a deal that council would feel comfortable trying something, uh, you know, over that course of that two years? And again, I just really am raising this for council to kind of start to, you know, sort of apply these measures to a a real live circumstance. Um, if council adopted the policy, then we would bring forward a recommendation, you know, on this basis and we would have any further discussion with Parks Canada on on the basis of policy was set. So certainly uh, hasn't been, has a direct impact in how administration behaves, um, that the numbers are here.
Thanks for that. And, um, just before Counselor Demoto, um, you noted the ninety percent of forecasted operating costs. I think I spoke in the past about full cost recovery being operating in capital, which would be something if we are um, going to go into a a new route which requires additional equipment, we need to make sure we're covering all of our costs. Uh, appreciate your comments, uh, uh, along those lines. Uh, Counselor Demoto.
Yeah, I'm glad that this was kind of, uh, addressed in the service warrants and it it speaks to something that I was addressing earlier. This is what made me think about it. Um, I think that maybe addressing capital commitment in there uh, is important, uh, on top of operating costs. For an example, as a community, we want to help community members get around and 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 can be connected. And I think that sometimes I guess people are going to want to go out to external areas and and like uh, CEO, CAO given and said, uh, you know, that provides our community members to get out to those outlined areas. But for an example, what is the extra cost if we're going to work outside of that? Uh, do our, you know, our external partners, whether you're a hotel operator, uh, you know, a resort area operator or, uh, you know, uh, Parks Canada agency. Um, when I said, what's it worth to you? I think outside of operating what we need for our community members, I think even with capital contributions, because if we're going to need to buy extra buses or extra, you know, loads of transportation for people to get in and around. Um, I think there has to be a capital investment in there because we're going to be, you know, again, you talk about advertising and promoting tourism in our community. Uh, Parks Canada, I I've been saying for a long time, are advertising for people to come here. So if they're interested in bringing more people to these park areas and it's putting stress on the infrastructure that we have, it has to come at a cost. So I think working something into an agreement somewhere um, needs to be, uh, you know, at the forefront in those discussions. We've had challenges where we've adopted some policy and, um, uh, agreements that took place in the beginning of, you know, our incorporation. And we've had struggles getting some fund, funding and financing. Um, for an example, our emergency services outside of the township, uh, to handle service uh, accidents and issues on the highways. Um, you know, are we appropriately, um, funded from, you know, external sources in that? I'm not sure, but I would like to get ahead of it when we're going through this exercise. Uh, so if we have to buy extra buses or whatever, I think we need to get some uh, commitment from those agencies to to help the community out because it can be on the local taxpayer. Thank you.
Mr. Given.
Deputy Mayor Meline, uh, to councillor's point, this is exactly the type of conversation that we are hoping to have. So in in thinking about the point that councillor was raising, um, uh, council's suggestion, again, if this meets the purpose, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly. If council suggests, then we would take away an amendment. Um, so maybe near those bullets where we're describing what council would expect before establishing new routes outside the town site. Uh, we could add to the one that exists, uh, the the first bullet there, prior to establishing new routes outside the town site, the municipality shall require a two year external funding commitment equal to ninety percent of the forecasted operating cost of the route, including any fleet leasing costs. So there's a couple of things there that would specify that, uh, it's not just the pure operational cost that that any lease costs for fleet, uh, to meet a new route should be should be included in that operating cost and specifies, I think that the municipality isn't buying new buses uh, or new fleet on a two year commitment. For the first couple of years, we would lease and, you know, or some other lease or rental cost maybe um, to specify that. And then a new bullet, so that would get the first two years and then a new bullet, uh, to say something along lines of ongoing commitment to new routes outside the town site after the third year of operation shall require a capital contribution from uh, an external fund, you know, external funding, uh, and external capital contribution. And we could specify equal to blank percentage of the cost of the fleet acquired to service the route. Uh, you know, fifty percent, hundred percent, ten percent. Again, cap that as a dial or a slider that council could specify. But I think that there's some language that we could put in to say in essence, for two years. And an outside party would need to commit to a portion of the operating costs during that two year period, the municipality would not purchase fleet. Um, and the external party would need to commit to supporting the cost of fleet required. After the third, sorry, before the third year, municipality and the partner would identify, you know, whether the route was worth continuing or not. And then, uh, a ongoing commitment outside uh, those after the third year of operations that require capital contribution because we've just determined that's something that should continue and that's time to start to plan to have our own fleet, uh, to be able to do that. So if I appreciate the council sort of seeing that and trying to imagine it in context, I don't see it in writing in front of you, certainly could add that uh, as a potential revision before it comes back.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying within the context of the discussion we've had with the warrants. I see, Counselor Demoto, you wish to make a comment. I nothing in here is saying that it has to be EVs or diesel. It could be either depending on how, what the service is going to be. So we're leaving ourselves open to be able to have a diversified fleet. I think could be important in how we operate year round. And go to councillors about it.
Yeah, it could be bikes, it could be scooters. Um, I just, I think another question that I have, like, if we're going to like small things like stop signs, uh, bus stop signs or, uh, pickup drop off signs, like, is that included in operating? Because that is a capital investment. You know, those things do add up. So I just wanted to clarify where the concept of that would land. And that's the first part of the question.
Uh, I don't, wouldn't see those as, uh, capital items, you know, for an individual stop. We're talking about, um, a sign, you know, that first would depend on the individuals, um, depend on the party that we're working with, uh, different. Uh different parties that are outside the town site might have different standards that they would like to see. Stops look like on their leasehold property, so we wouldn't be fully in control of that. Um but they could be as light as the municipality building a, you know, printing a sign, providing it to the other party for them to mount. How they wish to mount on their site. Um it could extend all the way, you know, stop. Locations could extend all the way to having more infrastructure, probably in an urban area, you know, within the town site, you would have stops that have more. Infrastructure around them and underlying areas outside the town site would probably be lower infrastructure or apartment and less cost.
Well, I think all the deciding and marketing of it should be equal to those if we're gonna, if, yeah, just so people know where they're getting on. I think the other thing too is um a hard ninety percent, it's and I've used the term arbitrary before, but right now, this is kind of like a. Um an educated guess, and I think, uh you know, for forecasting and I think. However, we go through this, it's gonna help us develop a better business plan and a budget, and if we find that ridership is going to make up. Some of a little bit more or we need a little bit, you know, uh either way, uh we should be able to adjust that. You know, like, right now, we have ninety percent understanding, but eventually, like, maybe it's eighty-five percent that we are, we're only gonna need, so. Uh I don't know how to work in that flexibility into the service warrants itself, or if that's really needed. Um and then, because that might be, that might be uh asked. By our, you know, external partners if we decide, if they decide to get. And and that could be a deterrent, you know, just like, whoa, that's a pretty high number, like, how flexible can we be in in that percentage, so. Just a question, I think a general question out there, it doesn't need to be addressed here today. Uh maybe next week when we've had a little bit more time to think about that. Um I'm just throwing that out there for um just to think about.
Other counselors wish to weigh in? Uh Mister Given, we've had conversations around making adjustments in the service warrants area. Um if we refer this back to the administration to make those service adjustments to. Go back to council, would that be appropriate or do you like more formal? Um uh direction from committee?
Deputy Mayor, like, I think my suggestion would be uh recognizing that we don't have all accounts here today. Uh maybe this is a refer back to administration to make adjustments based on the discussion committee. Great, that that can be a motion, I think we have that as an alternative. Um the committee direct administration to revise the transit service standard policy and return to a future committee of the whole meeting. Uh that would give me an opportunity to um get some of the specifics, as well as maybe there are a couple of the other. Items that were discussed such as uh stop, so that characteristics of transit stops. I think that we wouldn't wanna get into spelling out the specifics, what that would look like, but we could incorporate. That that is a standard that we should establish. Uh so there are a few other points, and I imagine that with your colleagues at the table, there may be additional. Um discussion, so I'm not sure that it's ready to go to council, I think it is a refer back to administration, we can make some adjustments. Then come back to committee uh when there are more members present, and then the committee can make additional adjustments if apart.
I think you've articulated a motion that may come from one of the counselors. Looking for that? Counselor Hall.
I can make a motion to. Committee direct administration to revise the transit service standard policy as per conversation today and return to a future committee of the whole meeting, so. Okay.
I think that pretty well captures that. Good discussion, everyone. Um last go around, if there are no other comments, I will call a question. All those in favor? That is Carrie. And um. We're now moving on to Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Master Plan Implementation Update. And do we have um? Lisa Radel uh online, or will you be presenting, Mr. Given?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, I'm gonna be presenting this one. Um. Council is aware that the municipality has an equity diversity inclusion policy. Uh that was adopted back in twenty twenty-one, and then in fall of twenty twenty-one, council adopted the five-year equity diversity and inclusion master plan. For the municipality. Um that policy sets out uh, the the plan itself sets out how the policy will be actioned by administration over a five-year period. Um and a part of the policy says that administration is required to present to council on progress. So this is a annual progress report on how we're doing and some of the activities of prior year. Uh the report is there, I will maybe just cover a few of the highlights. Um there are a number of bullet points highlighting the work that has been happening in the EDNI space. Um with the municipality over twenty twenty-three, um we have our internal inclusion committee that has met uh four times. Uh that's really more of an inward-facing action to discuss how the municipality as an employer and as an organization can be more inclusive. Uh we've also undertaken a number of external actions, including uh updating. Uh and promoting again our reconcili action calendar, uh which I think has been well received by council in the community. Uh we've partnered with Parks Canada in a couple of instances to organize uh National Indigenous Peoples' Day and National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. Uh events. Uh internally, we've organized the proclamation and activities for welcoming week, which. Uh really drew a significant number of residents together uh to help ensure that everybody can feel included in that community. We saw over four hundred residents depart in that in twenty twenty-three. We've continued our internal work on the inclusion tool to ensure that administration has different methods and approaches to. Um consider inclusion when making uh operational decisions, bring reports to council. I know the council had an opportunity, it was twenty twenty-four action, uh council participated in some of that training. Um the planning for that training and an application for funding actually started in twenty twenty-three, but council, I think, received that. Some council members were able to participate in that a week or two ago, and also in twenty twenty-three. Uh under the approved budget, that council supported a position for a project coordinator. To support a number of different areas um of activity within the municipality, but particularly to advance. Some of the areas of the EDNI master plan, including indigenous relations. Uh so we hired that position and they were active through twenty twenty-three. Uh the municipality received funding from Alberta Immigration Multiculturalism, uh which enabled us to design and launch Engage Jasper dot C A. So our engagement platform, obviously, this provides broad usefulness and utility to the entire community, but specifically. Um for uh newcomers who are probably using more digital resources and tend to. Uh engage with municipality that way. Uh but it provides the ability for harder reach, harder to reach groups that may not attend in open house scale that participate in community dialogue. Uh from from the comfort of their own home. Uh we again finalized and distributed the community guide. Uh we specifically focused that document uh on uh design and writing that is intended to be inclusive and accessible. Uh as foundation of guiding principles and how we developed that. Council is aware that we had another successful season of the community dinner program, which showcased showcased diverse community groups. Uh including all the various cultures and foods that are available here in Jasper. Um internally, we organized and hosted blanket exercise training for municipal staff and council. Um we requested and received more funding towards truth and reconciliation actions. Uh we use some of that to create a three-year indigenous relationship uh relations work plan. Uh and when we reference that work plan, I wanna be specific that we see that as a draft work plan, because ultimately. Um under the principle of nothing bonus without us, uh the municipality intends to gauge indigenous partners on ensuring that. Anything that we plan to do is is designed to develop with them. Uh but we have internally uh begun work in that area. Uh we've also, uh and council member, uh brought forward recommendations, council directed updates to the community and economic development fund application process. To ensure it was as equitable and inclusive as possible to allow as many people to participate as possible. Uh looking forward to twenty twenty-four, the inclusion committee's goals include developing a committee member handbook that will. As we cycle more internal staff through participating in the inclusion committee, we see a need to, you know, orient them to. Inclusion, diversity, uh and equity uh principles. Um and help them understand how our organization uh is committed to those. Uh we're gonna continue to provide recommendations uh in the area to the C A O and we've been. Establishing a process of recommendations from the inclusion committee to the senior leadership team, which meets weekly, that's myself and directors. Um the committee is looking at developing onboarding training for all municipal staff. Um and council will likely see a recommendation coming forward this year to join the coalition of inclusive municipalities. Um I won't go through all the rest of the details, um council can see attached the progress report. Which identifies all of the specific recommendations from the five-year plan, as well as the items that are complete. Uh those that are in progress, the ones that are started and the ones that are not started. Uh as you can see, uh we've got eighteen percent of the recommendations are fully complete, another just about thirty percent are in progress. Uh with just eighteen percent not yet started. Um so this is the report on administration's progress on the EDNI master plan um for the twenty twenty-three period.
Thank you, Mister Given, a very detailed um summary of what occurred in twenty twenty-three. And plans here in twenty twenty-four, as well as where we are in the roadmap uh in this five-year plan. Um counselors, any questions for Mister Given? I would make the comment that on a five-year plan, if we're um. At this point, um in twenty twenty-four, with only eighteen percent of items not started, I think we've got a. Good handle on things that uh over the course of the period this plan is going to be implemented. Um you know, we should be able to attain uh a majority of of this plan, which started back in twenty twenty-two. Um impressed with the um number of initiatives that have been undertaken. And some of the successes such as the culture night um here in the community, so uh I personally am. Um glad to see that the work that's been done so far on this initiative. Counselor Hall.
Thank you, thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. I'm also very proud of the municipality's commitment to this plan, uh we heard from Miss Wannett this morning. From the Pride Board that the world seems to be moving backwards, which it kind of seems like it is moving backwards, especially with. No potential president in the States would cancel all EDNI policies if he was elected, so. This is one area where I'm very proud to be part of this organization and part of this uh plan, so. Thank you very much, administration.
Counselor Wilson.
Um if there's nothing further, I'd make the motion that committee receive the two thousand twenty-three annual report. On the implementation of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-six equity diversity and inclusion master plan.
Thank you, counselor. Um counselors, any comment? Mister or counselor?
Well, I did have more, but I I think I I can ask for some some information here. Uh I understand that there's a motion, I'm not really speaking. Uh for gains, I'm definitely supporting it one hundred percent. Uh but just as a first-generation Canadian and being brought up in a in a family of uh newcomers to Canada. Uh you know, you in retrospect, you gotta look back and and wished, at least on my part, that. There were more advancements. Um. You know, in our general society like this, uh when I was younger, just to see, and you know, I, this is great for. For um everything that is being and all the people that are being interested in this, and. I think, you know, we're not gonna get everything right right away, and we can't get up to full speed on everything that we want to do for everyone, everything right away. But I'm very impressed, you know, from the the time and I wish Counselor Baxter was here, because I I think that one of the. Bigger steps in our communities when uh her and her team at the time uh. Made progress with the diversity project in Jasper, that was really important for me to see. Um so definitely support that, I think one of the questions that I had, just uh, you know, because one of the. The points here was uh updated and promoted. Uh the reconcili action calendar invite, because reconcili action is is a specific term. And the way it's it's kind of um noted there, I just, I wanted to make sure that we're working within. Um you know, uh what the the National Center of Truth and Reconciliation uh identifies as reconcili action. And that's highlighting the the ninety-four calls to action, and I was just hoping that if we're using that wording, that's exactly what we're doing. Is kind of aligning ourselves um with that initiative. Through you, Deputy Mayor.
Mister Given.
Thanks very much, uh counselor Melnick, uh for counselor Demoda. So uh certainly, administration is well aware of the calls to action and the items that apply specifically to municipal governments. Uh there are a number of other areas where the municipal government could have any influence, although we may not be specifically identified. I would expect that uh more specifics around the municipality's intention around the calls to action, other than a general commitment to them. Uh would be one of the items that might be addressed in our upcoming indigenous relations strategy or, you know, work plan to say, okay, so. What are important steps for the municipality to take as we build these relations and ensure that they're well grounded in the calls to action and that. Uh potentially, um we referenced the call to action, so there's a bit more of a clear link at this time, administration is fully aware. Uh supportive and committed, um but I think that's a piece of future work to identify what specific actions will take. In response to specific call to action in the uh ninety-four recommendations.
And uh. I just did, I wanted to finish on adding on to that, like on another note, because of the reference to to this uh Ms. Wannett's. Uh presentation earlier, I I wanted to to say how happy I was to see other colors added to the flag and, you know, I I think those are important. Because uh there are uh new people to this country that often feel like it takes a bit of time to. To be accepted and worked in, uh you know, the social fabric of what Canada's all about, and. Um I think that was a big step for me to see as well. Yeah, any step forward is helpful.
Thank you, Counselor Demoda. Um any other comments? Um Counselor Wilson, any other comments to close? We have a motion on the table, I would call the question, all in favor? And that is Carrie. Right now. We're now will be on to item. Community and Economic Development Fund Applications. Um. Mister. Uh Reed, it appears that uh it is your time to come to the national.
Uh thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Melnick and council. Uh so the item before you is indeed the Community Economic Development Fund Applications. Uh for the first intake of twenty twenty-four. The recommendation is that committee recommend council approve the following community economic development fund applications. Uh Jeffrey Wilson in the amount of sixteen hundred and sixty-seven dollars, Danny Frichette, the Jasper Physiotherapy. And massage also in that same amount. The alternatives, of course, council uh committee could recommend council approve alternative uh applications should you wish to do so. Uh the background summarized, uh as you may remember, on February twentieth, council approved the revised policy. Which certainly opened up the C E D fund to far more uh eligible applicants, and so we did receive. Uh you will see there twelve uh. Fully vetted applications and our. Community Economic Development Fund Administrator, Jenna McGrath, did work with all of these groups to ensure that their applications were. Of the appropriate quality and depth to meet the requirements of policy B one one seven. The policy uh includes the the amount of the fund, which may award a total of up to ten thousand dollars per year. And so administration has uh split that basically into two, there are two intakes, so we are recommending five thousand for this intake. The policy indicates that a group cannot have received municipal funding via the regular budget process for this year. But this call for applications, um uh administration applied the revised policy as mentioned. And so um in the discussion, all of the applicants submitted completed applications met their core criteria as outlined in policy B one one seven. And you can see the full list of the dozen applications. And then if you scroll to the next page, you can see the scoring. They will note that it is a testament to the applications that the scoring is quite high across the board. Um and administration simply selected the three highest scoring applications to submit. Uh for council committee approval to council. And um as you know, uh as I mentioned, this financial resource. Um, as you know, uh, as I mentioned, this financial resource to administer this fund are in the draft, in the completed twenty twenty four operating budget. And, uh, as we were discussing equity, diversity, inclusion. Um, this process has been revised quite extensively to enhance the inclusivity of the application process. And I'm really actually quite proud of the way that Jenna, sorry, Ms. McGrath and and Ms. Redell, uh, did. Create a real opportunity for these dozen groups to feel, uh, supported as they went through their application efforts. Um, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, uh, councillors, any questions, councillor DeMota?
Well, I I do trust the process and, uh, you know, and how we got to to here. I'm very impressed with the transparency and, uh. You know, having all the scoring in front of us here, and I I think that really helps people understand, uh, if they're interested. Uh, in the process, uh, just with the comment, though, um, I'm ready to move on this. But, uh, there are two items on here, um, with regards to the Danny Frichette. Asking Jeffrey Wilson asked, because I think. There were some budgetary, uh, commitments. On the specific, uh, men shed and the, uh. The, uh. The Happy Little Trees, I think, project on Snape Hill, and I just wanted to make sure there was a differentiation in the ass there. Just to clarify and see if there were any budgetary commitments made to those, and is there any conflict with the decisions that are potential here?
I think, uh, the question that that you're asking councillor DeMota is. There is some support for these two groups. In. The current budget year. But. Will be handled. I believe operationally without any particular allocation from the budget specifically. Does that summarize, I think, maybe your concern?
Yeah, if you're clear on that. And, uh, that's the actual. Uh, circumstance that I'm okay, I just wanted to make sure for the sake of the community and people looking. If we have, uh, we've had reservations to to council and and but it might be. Uh, considered out there that we've already contributed, uh, some into in in some fashion. Um, I think. I don't know if the what the wording in the policy actually specifies, but. You know, if it's open to, uh. Interpretation, I just want to make sure we're clear, there's a good division there.
Hey, I think looking at the. The policy indicates that a group cannot have already received municipal funding. By a regular budget process, meaning they could not have come to us. And specifically asked for a dollar amount, which was then approved, and we would have gone into an F one oh four agreement. Um, what these. Are 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 asked through this fund. Even though there may be other, um, support within the municipality for those two initiatives. And I may ask, uh, director Reed to clarify if that's. Um, and or Mr. Given the the understanding of how we're moving forward.
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick, uh, through to councillor DeMota and all of your comments. Uh, that is correct, we interpreted. Budget funding support as you have defined it. Um. It it may be to councils wishes that, uh, funding support. Be more clarified to any support that, that you know, until this intake, we hadn't seen that opportunity. Um. But you're correct, your interpretation of what we determined was, there's no other, uh, budget line item that's delivering funding to this group. The group had a need that met the requirements, so it met policy. But, but as I say, council may wish to amend that.
Councillor DeMota, I'm glad you understood the question I asked administration, so that's. Appreciate that, councillor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. My question, only because I can't remember, have we always awarded three applicants each? We've done this twice now, has it always been, is it, is there a reason we've chosen three on this one?
Uh. Deputy Mayor Melnick, true, councillor Hall, uh, there's the only reason there are three on this application is that. It seemed to balance the high scores of three in particular with the amount of funding that we could offer. Um. It 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 is simply a recommendation from administration where we saw the best balance of high score and. Nearly funding all of three of those requests. I'm sorry, if I may just jump in to add, to answer your other question, there is, we don't have a rule that we bring three forward. That that's just coincidentally happened. Of course, last few round of kitchen.
Councillor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick, I just wonder if. Like, looking at their applications, the Jasper Physiotherapy Massage asked for fifteen hundred to twenty five hundred, I wonder if we could. Award them fifteen hundred and then award the other two seventeen fifty as they did ask for. A bit more, looking around the table. So I think this is the. First time we've ordered a word of three. Or there's three before us, if I remember correctly.
And councillor DeMota?
Well, I'm fine with the recommendation, if you want to make a motion to suggest otherwise, I'm I'm ready to move on this, and if you want to make a friendly amendment, we could try that out too.
I think I got the temperature around the table.
Oh, we're so cold. Okay, well, I, but we still have another week, right? So I mean, this, you know, and if we get feedback from the community, then that's, that's one thing that I. Really welcome here about this process, uh, I move the committee recommend council approve the following. Community and Economic Development Fund allocations. To Jeffrey Wilson in the amount of one thousand six hundred and sixty seven. And the same amount, uh, to Danny Frichette and Jasper Jasper Physiother. Jasper Jasper Physiotherapy and Massage, um. Both were one thousand, uh, six hundred and sixty seven dollars as well.
Thank you councillors, we have a motion on the table, any discussion on the motion? This will move us to get this to council. I'll call the question, all those in favor? And that's carried.
And for the sake of administration, I. I'm more than happy to have that read in the minutes as it's presented in the council package, not the way I worded it.
Thank you, um, we're really close to the end of the agenda, we're going to continue for those watching. Um, we will try to get through the rest of the agenda, councillor DeMota?
Unfortunately, I have an obligation, I have to leave here for, and and I should have been, I should have told you about that. The time is here, so I have to go, and I know that affects, um, Cora. But that's. Others.
Understand, um. You're having to depart right away. Would it be possible? Um, to move to item seven point seven for the Activity Centre renovation update, or will that be? The the length of that would be too long and you need to depart, okay?
Yeah, coming back after lunch.
Oh, the only other problem is councillor Wilson is not available after one. So. Um. In this circumstance, we will then have items. Seven point six council representation on external boards. And seven point seven move to the next regular council meeting, um.
Deputy Mayor Melnick, my recommendation would be that any remaining agenda must be tabled to the next, uh, regular, sort of to the next committee of the whole meeting, okay? Um, you know, there are committee items that would have recommendations potentially to council, so that that's probably the cleanest way, neither of them are particularly time sensitive. Uh, we're not looking for any action that is required today.
All right, so, all right, councillor. DeMota's departure, we recommend that. Items seven point six and seven point seven, uh, I I'm looking for a motion that these be deferred to the next committee of the whole, thank you councillor Hall. Um, without debate, I'm going to quickly go, all those in favor? With that, um, I next am going to move to, um, a motion for adjournment.
I just want to say, I apologize, I didn't know that councillor Wilson was going to come back after lunch, and I I made the. An appointment thinking that we would have a lunch break, so I have to. Yeah.
Did I make the, um, somebody made a motion to adjourn? That was councillor Hall, all those in favor? Ladies and gentlemen, the honourable chair, thank you very much for, uh, being available today for the committee of the whole. Meeting, we will be back here on April sixteenth at one thirty. For the regular council meetings, and, uh, thank you to the individuals who came to present for their participation today.